All right. Good afternoon to all. Welcome to this afternoon's work session. We're going to have a moment of prayer, then do the pledge of allegiance, and then we will start our discussion. If you would, everyone stand with me. All right, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every justice for all.
All right. The purpose of this work session is to discuss the Fifteenth Amendment as being proposed by MARTA at our meeting last week. This board decided that we needed some further clarification and ongoing discussions. So with that in mind, we've asked Jeff Parker, general manager of MARTA, to come, and he'll make some few comments and statements, and he'll have some slides that he will make reference to, and then we will continue our conversation. Mr. Parker, welcome.
Thank you, Chairman. Just want to, you know, we've prepared a lot of information for you. We're willing to, you know, bring it up and hopefully to provide some clarity. I think really what I'm hoping to accomplish today is to make sure that this commission has a good understanding of the objectives that MARTA is trying to achieve through this Fifteenth Amendment, that we can answer any questions that you have, and then also make sure that any sort of changes to the Fifteenth Amendment that seem to make sense mutually get incorporated into the version that we ultimately get the MARTA Board of Directors to approve. The MARTA Board of Directors has not approved anything yet, so we don't have a document that's set in stone, prepared to send to you to start the 60-day clock. I think we're very close, but we are still in the point of trying to discuss and get feedback. So thank you for inviting us, and I won't introduce the team. I think most people know people. When we need to bring people up, we'll introduce them for you, and it won't take time to make introductions, with the exception of our board chair, Frieda Hardidge, is here, and I want to thank her for coming down.
Okay. So I understand you have a few comments and statements in reference to the Fifteenth Amendment.
Yeah.
You said you heard what the discussion was about last week.
Yes.
So if you can pretty much, and let me say this, because time is limited.
Yes.
Just make sure we address those questions that are asked by each commissioner, and make sure we try to do it as thorough as possible.
Absolutely.
This does not have to be the last time that we have a work session to discuss this issue.
Absolutely.
But I do want to make sure, for clarity purposes, that our questions are answered today.
Yes. So I'm going to bring up the second slide here, and this is one of the questions that I know is asked, is where is the current sales tax going? And so what you see here is a representation of the one cent sales tax that's collected across the MARTA jurisdictions. Proportionally, we've sized this to indicate the proportion of the sales tax that's collected by jurisdiction. In Clayton County, as you can see and hopefully understand, is graphically a little different there, and that has to do with the money that we're setting aside into the reserve account. So as you can see, we are sending, we get a total of $461 million of a one-cent sales tax across the jurisdictions. That is funding two sides of the business, the system operation, the O&M providing the bus service, the rail service, and that's $239 million. And then we're also sending about half, it's very close to 50/50, of the sales tax dollars to the capital program. And then combined with other funding sources, like on the operating side, we have Fairbox. On the capital side, we have federal funds, we have previous share carryover and bonding. And then on the right side of each of those, we have a breakdown of the operating as well as the capital dollars expenditure. And we are, so this is funding our state of good repair, and we've divided that pie into vehicle systems, non-assets, and that's like IT equipment, systems like that, as well as debt service. So this is meant to give you a sense of how the one-cent sales tax is spent across the system. And then, as you can see, there's a little half of the one-cent sales tax, which is in the dotted with the star, the asterix. On the next slide, we show how the Clayton County one-cent sales tax is distributed. So the first half of the sales tax goes to the operation and the sustaining capital of the overall system, like the penny that's collected in Fulton de Cab and the city of Atlanta. And then through the agreement that we have with you, we have an escrow account, and that's the other half of the penny, and we're allocating three-quarters of that to the, three-quarters of the half of that to the expansion program, and then a quarter of that to the expansion, the operation of the expansion program and the sustaining capital. And so the table below, I won't read the numbers, shows you the amount of money that is currently in the reserve account. So as you can see, the subtotal in the reserve account is $96 million, and you can see how that has grown over time. I will point out that the operations and sustaining capital is the money that's come in, and in the first two years, we did purchase buses that support the current operation of the bus system here in Clayton County. And then in subsequent years, the work that we're doing to advance the capital expansion program is being spent, and the remainder of the money over those five years is what is, we've accumulated into the reserve account. I'm sorry, so the total reserve is the 103. Does that bring, does that answer the questions about where the money, how the money is coming in, and how much money is in the reserve account?
Any questions in reference to this? Okay. Proceed on, sir.
The next piece of it is, we thought that it was important to share the current bus routes that were operating, and these are the nine bus routes that are current in operation with the ridership. And as you can see, we've got some of our routes, both Upper Riverdale Road or Upper Dale Road, as we have abbreviated there, Great Ridership. There's a graphical representation. We also have, through the community input, we do have a plan and a commitment to add two more bus routes, which will provide that east-west connectivity that we've heard a lot of requests for in the county, and our plan is to implement those two bus service routes this fiscal year. So our fiscal year ends in June of 2030. So this is, I know there was a question about where the bus routes are, and then this is a graphical representation of where the ridership is at those, on those bus routes, and just depicting where overall our ridership is. And obviously, this is a map that shows a little more than Clayton County, but we're focused on Clayton County here today.
Let me ask you a question. I know you're showing this to us, making this presentation. Is any of this in the Fifteenth Amendment?
No, this is just to answer, well, the commitment to continue this service is in the Fifteenth Amendment, so part of that, the Fifteenth Amendment would continue the commitment that we're making to all of the jurisdictions to continue to run the service that we're providing.
Within the contract itself, does it spell out the expansion?
It lays out the expansion program, yes it does, and it lays out, the Fourteenth Amendment has the detailed report that is already in our contract, and then we have added the appendix Exhibit D, which provides a summary of some of the larger projects.
You mean the Exhibit D for Clayton County?
Yes, we've added an Exhibit D, which, go ahead.
Well, first of all, on the previous slide of the reserve, I'm just to ask for point of clarification, that reserve is accumulating interest in some app on our behalf?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, okay. I know Exhibit D, and our penny equates to roughly, from what I'm understanding, about $40 million per year. We want to extend it to, from 2048 to 2057. And I know I asked this question last time, and I'm starting to get some numbers on it, which is, what will Clayton County's input be at that point from 2048? You know, we have a whole lot to deal with as far as interest and the economy of scales, but some reports are stating roughly about our penny will equate to about $120 million versus the 40, and starting in 2048. And I'm just trying to get a perspective of what we're putting in over the course of the lifetime of this.
So over the course, the sales tax that would, going out to, let me be clear, going out to 57, so that would include the timeframe of the Fifteenth Amendment, the total amount collected is $4.3 billion.
That's of all counties?
And then 3.5 without the Fifteenth Amendment. So under the current contract, going to 47, it's 3.5 billion.
And then going through 2057?
You know, I just misspoke. So let me be clear, so the 3.5 is through 2057?
Right. Yes, without the Fifteenth Amendment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Without, so without the Fifteenth Amendment, in 47, we will revert down to a half cent, right? So that's the current contract. So it doesn't go to zero. So under the Fourteenth Amendment, up through 47, we'll be collecting a one-cent sales tax, and then without an amendment, Fifteenth Amendment, it will revert to half a cent sales tax, and that would bring in $3.5 billion.
So we are still vested from 2048 to 2057?
Absolutely.
With or without?
Correct.
The Fifteenth Amendment?
Correct. And let me just talk about that point, because there's a very important point right there. And so the current, the current agreement that we have is to escrow money to build a system, and that are the projects that we've identified in the Fourteenth Amendment. The agreement that we, this is the current agreement, I'm not talking about the Fifteenth Amendment. The current agreement has that, once we've delivered the last expansion program, then the Clayton County penny is treated just like the, there's no more escrow account that we're going into. We've already bonded against the revenue, we've built the system, and now we treat Clayton County's one-cent sales tax through 47, just like the other jurisdictions, where that goes, where generally, half of it right now is going to the operation of our system, and then the other half is maintaining the current assets that we have, our bus maintenance facilities, all the projects that we would have built in our, with our system, like the bus maintenance facility in Clayton County that we would build, and the rail system, the bus, and that would, we have an ongoing capital program. And our current halves, our current, the current half cent, half of the sales tax, the half cent that goes to our sustaining capital program, our state of good repair program, we need that entire, that entire amount of funds to maintain our existing program. And so that's a key piece of this. So if we were not to get the Fifteenth Amendment, in 2047, we would no longer have the half cent of sales tax that's going to maintain the existing system. And we could, you know, we've got, when we look over time, the backlog of assets that we have to maintain, we need to have all of those available funds, half of the one-cent sales tax to maintain the system going forward.
Okay. So let's say we have agreed on the Fifteenth Amendment. As part of the planning, I should say, what level of planning has been thought about as far as the federal funding goes?
So.
Or incorporated into that plan?
So each of the programs, and let me just bring up, just for example, one of the, so each of the expansion programs, we're following the federal process, and I won't go into the details of this, to make sure that they're eligible for us to seek federal funds, and then each of those, each of, for example, the multipurpose maintenance facility, we will use federal funds that we currently, we get an allotment of federal funds that is tied to the amount of service that we provide. We will use that to match the investment that we're making in the maintenance facility, and then for, for example, the BRT or the commuter rail, we will, we will be somewhere at the end of the environmental process and in the beginning of the engineering phase, we will be applying for federal funds and using our local funds as a match to be able to construct those two projects. So we are contemplating, in order to deliver those funds, we do need federal funds to deliver them, and that's the case with every expansion project that we have here in Clayton County as well as Atlanta.
Are you able to drill down into the federal funds that are discretionary versus formulary funds when it comes to this, because this is a broad explanation? Have you all identified specifically?
So our intention is the commuter rail system, we will be, in both cases, the commuter rail as well as the BRT, we will be seeking discretionary funds through the capital improvement grant program for the commuter rail system. It's a large enough program that we will be seeking new starts money. Typically, projects that are getting new starts money are getting close to 50%. We're making an assumption that the federal program will be in a similar state that it's in today, and that we will be using the local funds to match the 50% funds. For the BRT system, it's a smaller project, and there is a simpler process called small starts. That limits the total cost of the capital investment to $300 million, and there is a $100 million cap on the federal share, and that's the current program for the small starts. So we're also assuming that the small starts is a, or the BRT is a $300 million project, and we're seeking 100, up to 100 million in federal funds. You have that right, Frank?
Yep.
And I will say that, you know, one of the potential authorizations bills that Congress is thinking about is to increase the amount of federal share that's possible under a small starts project, and possibly increasing that to 150 million. But the assumption we made is based on the current design of the federal program.
One other question. So in the Fourteenth Amendment, there were promises that were made to Clayton County for projects in the Fourteenth Amendment. So are there any new projects that are presented towards Clayton County in this Fifteenth Amendment?
Yeah. So let me, this is, so this is a summary of the project status. We have the first, well, we've got the projects listed, we have each of the, you know, what was in Exhibit A of the Clayton County Extension Report. So for bus service, we are on track to additional fixed bus route systems in 2021. So the intention is, and I want to make sure I'm saying this right, Frank, the intention is that we will have delivered two additional bus routes by 2021, above and beyond the commitment that was made in the Fourteenth Amendment. For the O&M facility, the original commitment was FY 2020. We are, we have not gone through, and I've got a chart that shows you what we've done, but we have not met that commitment of 2020. Since bringing Frank on, we've put together a plan to deliver that project. We're in the middle of the environmental process right now, and we have a target to open that operation in FY 2026, which is late. I'm not going to, you know, not recognize that fact. On the commuter rail side, 2022 was what was in the report. We have, you know, we've, we are beginning the NEPA process now, we have a completion date to finish the NEPA process in 2022, target construction in 2025, and then target operation in 2030. I will say that when we look at what was in the 2014 report, the cost, and that's all the way to the end, was in the range of 250 million to 415. The current numbers that we have been using is significantly more expensive. One of the big impacts of that is that the assumption in the Clayton County Extension Report was that we would have largely been a shared railroad. We believe, at least where the project is now, there's a substantial amount of property acquisitions, and I think it's approaching, like, for example, $100 million difference just in the property acquisitions. So we've got to advance this project, we've got to work with the railroad to try and get it down to a cost that's affordable within the amount of money that we are setting aside for this, and we've got to decide how far down the corridor we can afford to build. So I don't want to suggest that this is an easy project to deliver. There's some decisions that need to be made about whether or not we can convince the railroad to do what we had originally envisioned around shared track, or whether we're going to have to spend additional money for property acquisitions, and then just trying to make this a project that we can deliver.
I'm glad you mentioned that. The first thing is, when I looked through the original Fourteenth Amendment that I went back and reviewed, I think it's on page 207, but page six of that portion of it, as you look through six through, where is it? Five through six, and I think it starts at like 207, that's the total tally of the numbers. When this Fourteenth Amendment was presented to the citizens of Clayton County, it specifically stated that the collection of the sales tax was going to be adequate to be able to deliver upon what was signed on at that time, and it specifically stated that. It also specifically states that Clayton County has no ability to go back and rescind the amount of taxes that we're paying into MARTA if you don't meet the needs or the promises that you made in the Fourteenth Amendment. And then it also speaks to the fact that in that amendment, that this board, prior to me getting on it, agreed within this amendment to execute eminent domain to be able to acquire some of this land that we're using as the reason why we're not going to be able to move forward with this project at the time that was previously promised. So with all of that being stated, personally, as only a commissioner of Clayton County, not in any other role, it makes it very difficult for me to be able to stand by that we need to extend our tax for another 10 years when we signed in 2014 that it was going to be adequate, and that was even in the financial times that we were in at that particular time. And then on top of that, I hear you when you say, well, those timelines were kind of unreasonable, but your budget has gone from $7 million to $26 million within MARTA alone. So for me, it's very difficult to say that, yes, this board needs to support a Fifteenth Amendment, or me in particular needs to vote towards it, considering all you've stated is we're going to get two additional bus routes, and now we're pushing back this target of operations for the bus facility that was also in there from 2026. At some point, regardless of who was the administrators, we have to deal with where we are.
Absolutely.
And we can't keep pushing it off and pushing it off. For me, I don't see where we need to commit to a Fifteenth Amendment when Clayton County has not received what it was promised from the Fourteenth Amendment. That's my concern, and I thank you for bringing all this information in, though.
Yeah, you know, let me speak to that. So clearly, we've also identified a bus rapid transit corridor along the busiest route, and that was not contemplated in the initial Fourteenth Amendment in the Clayton County Comprehensive Transit Plan. On these larger capital projects, we are behind. I'm not going to at all suggest that, that, you know, or try and create some sense that it's anything but, that we just have not met the deadlines that were laid out in the plan. I would suggest that we are organized like we have never been before to meet the deadlines of that we are putting in these future projects. And then the reality of the funding issue that we face around the commuter rail corridor in particular is in front of us with or without a Fifteenth Amendment. The Fourteenth Amendment has contemplated that, once we deliver the expansion program,
Once you deliver it.
Right. Once we deliver it, that the whole penny is then treated, there is no more reserve account. So this reality of what we can deliver with the current reserve account is a reality that MARTA has to deal with. That's for us to deal with. We've got to come to you, keep you apprised of that, work with you, work with the realities of what we face. I'm not going to run away from that reality, but without a Fifteenth Amendment, these issues still exist. They don't go away. But what they become is even more difficult for us to deliver the commitments that we made in the Fourteenth Amendment, and that's because without the 10 additional years of the half-cent sales tax, MARTA will be constrained with the amount of bonding capacity that we have. And without that bonding capacity, what we will have to do to be good stewards of the existing system, the system that we operate here in Clayton County today, the rail network that serves, that's been serving this region, and although it's physically not in this county, but, you know, our bus, many of our busiest bus routes feed right into it, the reality of that is, is that we will have to preserve our bonding capacity to make sure that we can maintain our current infrastructure. And so the whole implementation of our expansion program, both in the city of Atlanta as well as Clayton County, is going to have to move more and more to a pay-as-you-go capital program. And the reality, you know, the unfortunate reality of this, I don't mean to say this to be argumentative, it's just, I need to be transparent about what we're up against, is that we are, we are setting aside, in current dollars, 22 million into the escrow of county shares. Is that right, Frank?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five million. So in order for us to, year over year, accumulate enough money to be able to implement these projects and basically have that money in the bank, because the federal government is not going to give us a new starts award unless we have a solid financial plan, and we need bonding capacity in order to do that. So, you know, so I think that the old- So, I, you know, so I think that the overall system, although I, I completely, uh, uh, respect and now own the reality of the challenges that we have with this, and I'm prepared to deal with it, um, the lack of a fifteenth amendment doesn't make it any better. In fact, it makes it worse.
That binds us for another ten years with no recourse of action. That's my problem.
I got two questions for you. First one is talking about the increase in the bonding capacity.
Yes.
With that increase, is it not possible for these projects to be expedited from your projected dates?
You know, you know, we will, I mean, we've laid out, um, aggressive, aggressive deadlines. I would like to say that, like, for example, um, Frank is working with the FTA to talk about what the, um, what the environmental process needs to be for the O and M facility. Um, you wanna pull that up? And so, we believe that, um, that we can get to a, uh, you know, we want to be aggressive and deliver a, a project as quickly as possible. It's going to save us, save us money. Um, we're in the, uh, in, in the environmental review process, and, y- you know, you have my commitment to deliver this thing as quickly as possible.
Can we get a date, sir? We always-
This is, these are the dates. This is, they're right here. The intention is, these are the dates.
Hold on, my, my second question is, without FTA funding, how realistic is that commuter rail gonna be?
Not at all.
So, is there a Plan B? So, how can, how can you project? Let me back up, 'cause you run in place. Fourteenth amendment said we're getting the commuter rail. So, it's contingent upon FTA funding. So, you're telling me that without that, we're not gonna get that?
We would need to find, so, so our assumption is, well, I don't, you know, the, let, let's call it a five-hundred-million-dollar project, right? There're big ranges there. We would need to find state funding, um, look at other funding sources. We're not, you know, we're not contemplating an additional Clayton County sales tax that's, you know, like the city of Atlanta has done, above and beyond the one-cent sales tax. That's not the intention. But there is, you know, w- what I would tell you, I'd, I can't explain the reality of the wh- why that, that clarity isn't, isn't in everybody's mind about the need for federal fundings. But there is, there is, with the exception of probably Los Angeles, which has billions and billions and billions of dollars of, of, of funding right now. There is not a transit project in this nation that is not contingent on the ability to get federal funds. It's, it's not unique to Clayton County. It's not unique to any project in this region, and it's not unique to this country.
Well, uh, let me chime in on Chairman's question on the other side of that.
Yeah.
If we do put the dollars into the fifteenth amendment, is there still a chance that we still would not have rail?
I, you know, I, I think, I think there, there is. Um, I mean, we, we are going to do everything to shape a project so it is affordable and competitive with the federal government. If, I, I mean, I just can't look you in the face today, and for example, I can't predict what, how big of an allocation Congress and the current president or future president is gonna sign into law in terms of federal funding available.
And I respect that.
That's gonna, that's gonna impact us.
I totally respect that.
But where we stand today, um, you know, we believe that, that there is, you know, we've got to, we've, I, I think the biggest thing that we've gotta collectively work on is moving this, this project back to a shared corridor and absolutely minimize the amount of real estate that has to be procured on this project with, with the railroad. And that would have a significant positive impact on this project. And then the other piece of it is, is, is to what ex- how long can we afford to construct that project?
So, you say a shared corridor, and that, that, we gotta also be realistic. The state of Georgia is putting forth all of their efforts to make sure that they start to take as much freight off the road as possible.
Absolutely.
So, you're gonna increase, we're gonna see an increase of train and traffic coming through. So, with that being stated, you still feel that we would have some success or chance of success to have a shared corridor? Is that what you're stating?
That was what was, you know, what I'm pointing back to is the two thousand and fourteen report that included that as an option, and the whole, you know, wh- what we're here talking about is the reality of commitments made in two thousand and fourteen. So, what I'm suggesting is we've gotta work hard to get back to what we envisioned in two thousand and fourteen to get at Commissioner Davis's point of, you know, what is, you know, what can we do to make this project successful? And that's, and that's my, you know, that is, that's a big issue.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but there has also been some discussion about a mixed use of using Norfolk's line as well as some areas constructing new line?
Yeah, so, so, so the current, you know, what Norfolk Southern has said is, we've got this real estate right away, and how many feet is it? Twenty?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five feet or something like that? Separation. So, what they're saying is, we've got our existing corridor, and you can build a, a, a corridor, a railroad corridor, as long as you're twenty-five feet away from our existing, so that we have enough capacity for, for our use.
Is that in writing or just in discussions?
Well, I think-
We have that in writing or is it just a discussion?
Yeah, whatever, right.
The twenty, what?
Yeah, that's, so, so, yeah, Norfolk Southern, I believe, sent a letter saying that this is, in order for you to build in our corridor, this is what you need. That all came out after this two thousand and fourteen report was issued. Um, and then that became a huge challenge for us as, as, as soon as it, as, as soon as that was, uh, you know, presented by Norfolk Southern.
Yeah, and we actually met with him, I think it was twen- latter part of two thousand and fourteen or two thousand and fifteen, and the vice president at that time said that there would have to be that buffer.
So, I don't, I don't sit here today and say I alone can solve that problem. What I say is, I want this project to be absolutely successful. I want to meet the, 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 you know, the in- the intent and the words in the fourteenth amendment, and I think this is important to this county and to the MARTA system. And, you know, I've hired folks like, like Frank Rucker, that, you know, we are going to roll up our sleeves and, and tackle these issues. But I, I would be misleading you, and I'm not gonna mislead you, to say that, don't worry, this will absolutely be done in two thousand and thirty, and that there's, there's no risks here.
And that's why we're asking for transparency, but make no mistake about it, when the citizens of Clayton County passed that referendum in two thousand and fourteen by seventy-four percent, they fully expected to get commuter rail.
Absolutely. Yeah, and it's, you know, one, and one of, one of the things that we wanna do is, is create a phasing plan so that we're building this thing in increments and not waiting to be able to have Sure. all of the risks completed, all of the money in place, and to build it i- in phases. And obviously, we've gotta connect into the MARTA rail system, so we need to start, uh, north and, and move south.
Yeah, we had that conversation. Financially, that, that was a good recommendation.
And a side question, uh, because I did read that document again. It stated that MARTA would not seek out, um, the collection of additional ad valorem tax, but in actuality, of course, legislated by the state, a portion of our TAVT tax goes towards MARTA. And that calculation, even, even though I've been told that deals with DOR, is inaccurate. The calculation is inaccurate, and we need to get that corrected. And I think MARTA could definitely put some, um, efforts behind helping us to get that rectified for Clayton County.
Yeah, I know, uh, well, I, tha- that's an issue that all of the jurisdictions have. And I, you know, I mean, our, our board chair, um, some time ago, I don't know, was it a year or so ago, met, met with the Department of Revenue to, to work on addressing that very issue. It's, uh, it's an issue for all of the MARTA jurisdictions, and, and we wanna make sure that we're getting our fair share of that, of that, uh, tax, the, the TAVT tax.
And then the timing of which it's being collected for Clayton. I think there's still discrepancy about the dates. Again, that's aside from the fourteenth amendment, but that's something I think that you all definitely can help resolve.
You know, and I, I mean, my, my recollection is, is that there's been some withholding by Clayton County of, of that money. So, so I would respectfully suggest that the money is being held back until that issue is, um, rectified. I don't think any of the other jurisdictions are doing that. Um, so, at this point in time, the position of the county is, you know, that, you know, that, the, the county is not being harmed by that, by the-
No, we're holding until we get a resolution on that.
Yeah, yeah, no, right.
Because how are we gonna start, how are we gonna get taxed before we're even a member?
I, no, I-
So, again, that's not a fight or a discussion for now. Uh, but, uh, Commissioner's point, any support you're gonna give Clayton County, because it makes sense. We weren't even a member of MARTA, and they're, they're collecting taxes before time. That's, that's crazy to me. Any other questions by these board members?
Um, you spoke at, from the standpoint of pay-as-you-go, um, if it's not passed. I guess my, my question is kinda twofold. One, what does it cost to implement a bus route? And what does it cost to maintain a bus route?
So, um, let me answer, give you some numbers to help answer that question, not, not completely the way you asked it. So, the operating expense of the current, um, Clayton County service that's in Clayton County today, the bus service is fifteen-point-eight million dollars annually.
That's for all?
That's for all. That's for all. And then the, the, the complimentary para-transit service that we call MARTA Mobility costs us two-point-two million dollars.
Okay.
Um, so a total of, of eighteen million dollars. Um, and so, and now that is, if you think about, you know, overhead, right? That is just the raw cost of direct costs, so that doesn't include any overhead.
What would be some of the overhead, such as?
Uh, my salary, the, the-
So administrative, administrative-
All the administrative costs is, that is just raw, direct costs.
Okay.
So, so, you know, if we were to pro-rate that across this, you know, the system, it would, it would obviously be more. We don't, we don't, you know, we don't create an overhead like, I used to work for an engineering firm. I could tell you exactly what the overhead of the business was. We just don't, we just don't calculate it, it that way.
So, you'd pick that proactively with an administrative cost?
Yeah, so, you know, um, and then just hours of service and miles of service. So, um, you know, for an, uh, for a mile of service, uh, in the MARTA system, we're, we're about nine, nine dollars and fifty cents a mile of service. And then an hour of revenue service for a bus system is about a hundred and thirty-six, uh, dollars an hour. And keep in mind, direct costs. So, that doesn't include the capital investment of buying the bus, but it does include the expense of changing the oil, changing the tires, and, and keeping the bus operational.
And that's why I prefaced it with the implementation, uh, and implementation cost at first. Um, we have the hundred and three million in revenue, which is going hopefully, well, will go up as long as we're not getting services, correct? It will just go to maintain.
So, think, I, I, I think I-
And I'm basing, uh, based off the penny that you had up on the screen.
Yeah, he's coming back to that. So, so, so the hundred and three is what's currently in the reserve. We will continue to add to the reserve until the day that the expansion program is complete. And right now, the, the last date that we have on our plan that we'd like to get approval through the fifteenth amendment is two thousand and thirty. And then that entire penny would then revert to both, half of it going to the operation of the overall system, which are the numbers that I just spoke about, you know, the costs related to that, and half of it going to, uh, the ongoing capital maintenance of our system.
Okay. Let, let's say, pay-as-you-go, we've got part of the reserve. I heard that we can access a portion of that reserve over a period of time, correct?
We would, we would, it would, it would be a bank, you know, i- i- a bank account. We'd be depositing money, depositing money, depositing money, until we had enough money to implement a project. First, the next project that we would do would be the, um, you know, clearly, the maintenance facility is, is the next project that, that we would focus on.
So, conceptual.
Mm-hmm.
We say, chance of bus, of heavy rail or rail coming, we've come up with a, a number. We're saying it's less than twelve percent. So, we say, you know, we wanna go to Plan B, or we come up with a Plan B. And we say, this is a cost of Plan B. Can we begin to utilize that revenue for Plan B?
The, the escrow reserves?
Correct. And what, and what is the process of accessing that?
Well, we, two things. One, de- depending on what the changes were, uh, right? So, so we have, we have a contract, right? If, if the terms of the contract change, we're gonna have to mutually agree on those changes to the contract.
Well, that's where we are right now.
Right, that's where we are right now, correct. So, so, so depending on the magnitude of that changes, it, it would need to be in agreement between the, the parties. But-
But there, is there anything in the existing contract of what we can do or cannot do?
Well, the existing contract calls, um, calls the corridor, the, I mean, I don't believe it references it as a commuter rail corridor.
It doesn't.
We all, we all think of it as a commuter rail corridor, but the contract doesn't. So, that's why I'm saying, a change of some other mode in that corridor. I mean, I'm not the lawyer. I'd want the lawyers, and, and you would want your lawyers to, to, to think this through. But I think there's, you know, it's still that same corridor.
Cause I think contract, everything within its frame.
Oh, here, go ahead.
So, in the existing, um, fourteenth amendment in the contract that, um, we have with you all, there is actually a provision that if there are just minor deviations from what had been set out in the initial extension report, then the authority could go ahead and do that. If there would be a substantial deviation, which is what I think you're talking about right now, um, then that could not be done without the approval of Clayton County prior to us undertaking any substantial deviation. So, that is in the existing contract, yes.
Okay.
All right, well, I think, uh,
We haven't even gotten to the discussion about commuter rail yet, Mr. Chair.
No. Okay, this'll be the last question, cause we need to go into executive session before, uh, the next meeting, uh, in this gallery. So, Commissioner Hammer.
If we can go back to the chart that has, um, two thousand and fourteen and future. Well, what I'm trying to find out is, how does the fifteenth benefit Clayton County? Cause all I've seen so far is an extension of what we have from the two thousand and fourteen.
Yeah.
So, what, what does, what benefits Clayton County on, with the fifteenth?
So, so, um, I would say the, the, the most important benefit is, the, the, the direct benefit is that we will have bonding capacity so that the-
We is-
We being MARTA, right?
Okay.
Because, because we will, w- with the fort- with only the fourteenth amendment, we will be constricting the amount of revenue, excuse me, ability to bond. And we will run out of bonding capacity, and it will become shorter and shorter. And our bonding, our priority around the use of those bonding funds has first and foremost got to be around the maintenance of the existing system, just like any infrastructure that exists, whether it's a school buildings or, or a, or a sewer system or transit system. We've gotta protect the asset. The, the other critical piece, which is, which Clayton County and the rest of the MARTA jurisdictions just primarily benefit from is that if, at some point in time, MARTA, if MARTA doesn't believe it's ever gonna get a fifteenth amendment, and we're gonna re, re, we're going to, in two thousand and fourteen, go, excuse me, in two thousand and forty-seven, go to a half-cent sales tax instead of a one-cent sales tax for an additional ten years and beyond, we're gonna ha- we're gonna have to begin just- we're gonna, we're gonna have to begin just, you know, I don't wanna overstate this, but, but I can't even comprehend how we would provide service and maintain the assets that we have, because we would no longer have any capital assets to maintain the infrastructure. So we would, you know, we would have to significantly reduce service and prepare for that headed into twenty, in Clayton County and, and city of Atlanta and all over the place, to be able to afford, being a transit agency, with half the sales tax revenue that we had previously. And it would, you know, it, it's a, it's a significant scenario that I just try and not wrap my head around, because it's, it's hideously ugly for this region. I mean, that's the reality. Now these, and, and I go back to, that the issues on, on this, you know, the status of these projects are not affected by whether or not we get a, you know, ten more years of sales tax, with the exception of being able to bond. And so if we're able to bond, we're able to deliver these projects as, as fast as we could with these, with these dates. And that's what we're gonna work-
And that's what I was asking earlier.
So without that bonding capacity, we will not meet any of those dates in that future category. Because we, we've gotta go to a pay-as-you-go capital system. And so when will we have, you know, take, take the Lovejoy corridor, if it's six-hundred-and-fifty million dollars, when will we have three hu- half of that, three-hundred-and-twenty-five million dollars sitting in our escrow account in order to tell the, the FTA that we have the local match to now get in line for, for that project? It's not gonna be in- Yeah, when we would be able to begin the, you know, the NEPA process, so it wouldn't even, you know, thirty-four is when we'd have enough money to be able to tell the FTA we had a project, so, or, or a financing plan, so we could apply for the money. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so, we thank you for your presentation, Mr. Parker and your staff. At this time, because we are short on time, I need to take a motion to go into executive session. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? And it's executive session for litigation.
Thank you.
All right, motion to reconvene. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? A motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A second to motion, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? It's unanimous. Everybody have a good day.